Be ready on the.
Okay.
Hearing, yeah. Settings, yeah. As soon as we got that. And we're redirecting. Be ready.
It's ready.
Councilmember Dylan. Okay. Good afternoon all. Calling this meeting to order. Do you have any visitors in the room? All right then. First things first, the land acknowledgement. All Spokane Public Library buildings sit on the traditional homelands of the four bands of the Spokane Tribe of Indians. Upper Band, Middle Band, Lower Band, and Shewila Band. Since time immemorial, the Spokane Tribe of Indians has lived and cared for these grounds, identifying themselves as flesh of the earth. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. We show gratitude to the land, river, and peoples who have been fishing, hunting, harvesting, and gathering here for generations. May we learn from one another's stories so that we may nurture the relationship with the people of the Spokane Tribe and to all those we share this land. Okay. Proposed agenda, do we have any adoptions or changes? I'm here, okay. Uh, first motion is the approval of the May twenty first, twenty twenty four Board Minutes. Get a chance to review them.
I move that we approve the May twenty twenty one, twenty twenty four. The May twenty one, twenty twenty four.
Thank you. Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Keep it carried. Okay. The approval of the May twenty twenty four bills and contributions.
Uh, I move that we approve the bills and contributions. Uh, let's see, so it says May on the agenda, but it's June on the sheet here. We'd be approving for me.
Right.
Uh, for May twenty twenty four, the amount of $423,232.86.
I can go back to item four and do propose that change.
So just to confirm it.
Oh, no, it is for May, but this is the date of today's meeting that it's.
Yes.
So that's what it is, so there's no change. My motion is.
Second emotion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 You opposed? Okay. Nicole, you with me?
Thank you. All right, so for our library operations, I'll start with the May twenty twenty four updates. Um, so for library cash and investments trend, as of June month end, we are able to pay a hundred and forty two days of operating costs. Uh, and as a reminder, one day of operating cost for us is thirty eight thousand, three hundred and forty five dollars. That's for in our available cash and investment. Also, we received our expected library levy lift distribution. Um, that was from the county, the amount was for one million, two hundred and twenty five thousand, four hundred and thirteen. So we do get the first, the first um, distribution given to us in May, and then we expect the second one this coming November, so which two, two, three. For our expenditure trend for operations, for May, uh, we spent a total of one million, three hundred and ninety six thousand, six hundred and eighty six dollars. Seventy eight is spent of that amount is for staff costs. Uh, this does include a total of prepaid periods for the month of May. Uh, we spent a hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and seventy eight dollars on books and materials. Our third-party security guard, uh, those were thirty six thousand, two hundred and seventy. Our utilities totaled twenty eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety four. And then our interfund charges were twenty eight thousand, one hundred and eight dollars, that does include some second quarter charges for the accounting services and workers' compensation. Uh, any questions on operations before I move to the bond updates?
Can you remind me what branches we have, the third party?
Yes, um, so for that, we've got it at. Central is, is our largest spender for that, and then we also have a car at Shadle, at Liberty Park, and here at. Any other question? So for the bond update, not a lot going on at the moment, we haven't broken ground at, at our Nevada yet. But here's just a quick recap on where we're at, uh, as of the end of May. So our remaining covered balance is one million, eight hundred and twenty eight thousand, twenty five hundred dollars. Uh, the twenty four seven kiosk is a five-mile uh, lo- location, uh, that was completely done with, with install. Then for business office update, so we did go through the uh, city mandatory trainings for the new purchasing card system on the US Bank website, that went really smoothly. We will be going live uh, this month for, for June, when, when that closes up. The people will be able to electronically upload their receipts, they also can take a photo with their phone and upload it to the app, which is really great. Just saves, saves a lot of time and a ton of paperwork. Um, just for some context, there are months where the stack of P-card paperwork can be that thick, it gets kind of nasty, so this is gonna be great. Better for the environment too, pump up the trees. Um, also, we're working on an agreement right now with Spokane Transit Authority. Um, with, they're looking to place a stop on their ninety route on Sprague right here, and it's actually gonna be on the corner right up here. So we're gonna start looking at uh, breaking ground, and they will be making care of that entire project, but it gives some really good access for, for the, the community and our, our staff. Like to get this branch. Any questions? First, can your stop now? Uh, there's one, it's over there, and then there's one at Freya. And then go cut it down.
Is there any data on the utilization of the yosts?
We can report, we can report out on that next month.
Yeah, it'll just be interesting to see what the new sites.
So the Yoke site is really robust usage.
I'm sure with the.
So it'll be interesting to see, just because we have different examples throughout the city of, you know, different opportunities.
Demographics, yeah.
Well, let's see. Chairman's report, uh, the only thing that I have to mention is, uh, thank you for Samantha for getting things set up for leadership Spokane last week. Um, it was a big, big, bigger than huge turnout, uh, I was not expecting it to be that full. And I had the pleasure of doing the land acknowledgement, and it was a several hours of not only great speeches, but people, people were talking about how much they enjoyed being A in the library, but B being part of that whole organization, which is Spokane, so I'm glad we did that, thank you for, thank you for that.
Pinch any part. Appreciate it.
Well, no one can really pinch hit for you.
And with a much better voice.
Now that we've gone through all of that.
Sorry.
Over to you for the executive director.
All right, uh, my outreach continues in, uh, with the community, uh, different leadership, uh, folks. Uh, I've met with the Office of Civil Rights, Spectrum, uh, YWCA, Range Media, and Spokane Arts, needed to reschedule the Carl Maxi Center, so hopefully get, uh, Jelisa back on the calendar soon. A really proud moment for us at the library. Uh, our marketing and communications team will be receiving not one, not two, but three awards uh, at the ALA Annual Conference in San Diego. Uh, one of the honors is the highest honor that you can get for library and public communications, communications. And it's not the first time that Amanda's team has won this, this is the second time in five years, so I, you know, we know that they are awesome, but now everyone else does too. So really proud of the team, uh, for achieving that. It's San Diego, so uh, swim each time in there too, so congratulations. And that one does come with a small monetary award, ten thousand dollars. Yep. Uh, for our DEI work, our internal work, uh, we discussed the book, Braiding Sweetgrass. Uh, Lisa Cox also brought a little extra flair to the discussion, and we did braiding exercises, we talked about our connection uh, with nature. Will be, our next discussion will be When the Stars Are Scattered, this is a graphic novel about growing up in a refugee camp. So again, uh, expanding our knowledge and empathy through our discussions. Uh, in June, we also offered a family pride celebration for youth of their caregivers at the Central Library. A group of staff also marched in the pride parade, sorry, I couldn't be there, I had two graduations that week. Uh, but a really great theme around free people read freely, it did get a lot of mentions uh, online, uh, to the point where we uh, shut down. Because they were all free, uh, and we don't always need to be dealing with that. We also created a recommended list of books and films that talked about the importance of history of Juneteenth, which is a reminder of our closed system. Uh, our star spotlight, uh, went to Michelle Katie, uh, she assisted a customer uh, in a first aid issue and just really calm, cool, collected, and, and calmed everyone down. So really appreciate, uh, the way that they handled the situation. I also continue to hold office hours at all of our locations throughout every month. Uh, also exciting, we're actively recruiting new music submissions for uh, Lilac City Records platform, so this is uh, specifically for local musicians. We have up to forty-three spots to fill, and uh, selections will be made uh, by a group of jurors locally. And finally, we are continuing our budget discussions with the mayor's administration, uh, and hope to have more direction and something to bring to the board uh, in the coming.
Sorry, did you say the coming month or month?
Month, so hopefully in July, we'll, we'll have something uh, to bring to the board, for considerations, dialogue. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Councilmember Dylan is not here.
You can see him online, I'll leave it, just to confirm.
Amanda.
Hey, hi. Um, so summer reading is underway, that's been a big endeavor of our team for the last few months, getting ready for that, and Skylar and Denise are going to tell you more about that later today, but um, one thing I wanted to mention is that we're partnering with Trending Spokane in promotion of that program. Um, and we have a more robust adult program this year as well, so partnering with Trending Northwest allows us to advertise not only to parents, but also adults who might want to participate. Uh, to date, uh, we have more than fifty earned media stories, and I wanted to note that because we've been making a real effort to engage with the media more, so we've always really benefited from the media market here in getting coverage kind of without trying. Um, because people, they want to cover the cool stories we're doing, and so now we're, this is what it looks like when we are trying to get coverage, and it actually, we, last year, we had forty-two news stories in the entire year. And we've already exceeded fifty in half a year by putting just a little extra effort, some follow-up emails, some reaching, you know, personal notes. Um, and that's resulting in getting multiple stories on, on different topics. Um, for instance, we had twelve earned media stories in May, and two of them were on Bake Off, and two of them were on Lullaby Project. Um, and that is a direct result of Alina's efforts doing follow-up emails to the media to see if people are interested when it's a little bit more timely to the program, so it's really been working. And that helps get the word out about our program, so people come to them, we find it's one of the more effective ways for people to hear about our work, is, is through the media, of course. Uh, we are actively recruiting new music submissions for our Lilac City Records platform now through the end of August, using a uh, jury process now, we have a, a number of jurors who are going to review the submissions, and so as part of our efforts on our team is marketing that to the public and to musicians to get them to submit their music. Uh, we presented a clarify your message presentation, this is the third time we've at, been asked to present this um, on this topic for a conference, and so we presented at the Library Marketing Conference, online version of the conference, that they did that um, last month, and they, oh, that's the same presentation that we did in person in November and in person at WLA in March, and it actually is the com, it's the topic of the conference presentation is what we just won John Cossin for, so it's been a very popular um, presentation, and I'm, you know, I'm sure we'll probably present it more in the future as well. Um, but that was great to be able to do that in a virtual setting. And then in other news, I'm on the co, on the committee for Spokane's reading along with Sharma Shields and Angela Richardson from Spokane Public Library, and we announced the twenty twenty four title, which is PermaRed by Deborah McPhee-Erling, and she will be presenting at two different events on October twenty fourth, so I know that feels like a long way out, but we always announce it during the summer, so people can pick up the title, read it over the next few months, and then attend the event in October. Um, and then as far as social media, you'll see that there was an, a negative or a decrease in engagement, so this report reports on the activity in May. Doesn't reflect the activity that Andrew alluded to that we were seeing on our pride post, that you'll see a, a big jump in our engagement score for next month based on the engagement on that post, uh, for pride. Engagement isn't always because of positive things, I mean, it was a positive post, but the engagement content was negative, or some of it was negative. But you can see a, a little thumbnail, um, of some positive stories in the bottom corner here, it's a picture of the Indian Trail Garden, a picture of Andrew at the Thrive event in May, and then there is a little thumbnail there of our team, um, marching in the pride parade with some of the signs that we made for the. Any questions for me?
What's the split right now based on print versus electronic media, since you had such a, a bigger, better version?
Can you rephrase that question?
I guess what I'm trying to figure out is with all the robust things that you've done, what's the split between print and electronic media?
You know, the, in the past couple of years, we've actually started printing more, we have really scaled back on that, but now with our Lilac City Local Magazine and the Summer Reading magazines, we do quite a bit more actual printing of our own. So we have invested more in that, so people have a physical, physical place to read. But digital is still cheaper when to go. But we like to do a mix.
Yes, indeed. I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
You have other questions for Amanda?
Oh, yeah, I was gonna ask, um, are you anticipating that there'll be more music submissions than there are slots? So that the, like, the jury, like, you know, triaging and saying, oh, this person maybe is ready for.
That should be the hope, but we do have forty-two, forty, forty-three slots, so I guess we'll have to see, but we are, um, putting some money towards social media advertising, and we're doing some PR as well to try and generate more interest, so that we can get the highest caliber musicians from the community.
And we don't have to accept forty-three albums, so I think that's the biggest thing, is we want to make sure that there's still high quality as well.
And do they have to be from people who live within the city?
They have to be within the region, yeah, the Spokane area, um, ideally, and um, it has to be the richest, Jason, do you have anything else you wanna add?
No, just Spokane is this, the hub of music in this area, so if you're a band from Hope Falls, but you do all your shows in Spokane, it's still a big part of that basics. But yeah, we're hope, we've had trouble getting, sorry, it's getting people to come take two hundred dollars for licenses, so hopefully with what Alina's doing, marketing, far more than forty-three, we have budgets for.
That's an important point, we'll pay the musicians two hundred dollars for their music, and they retain the license, so we put it on the streaming platform, but they still own the music, so it's just a way for us to promote and be a platform to promote local music on Lilac City Records platform.
Wanted to congratulate you on the three awards.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just anxious to see how you top it next year.
Jason.
I'll be quick, May was another busy month. Almost five thousand people coming into events around the system, you can see the impact scores there, we've separated out from that. Some highlights, we hosted Scene Fest for the second year in a row at the Central Library, the Sharma Shields puts that whole thing together with thirty partners. Over four hundred people came through for that, so it was a really exciting thing, really great workshops, selling some cool things. Um, Vanessa Strange, our Adult Services Manager, collaborated with the Asians for Liber, or Collective Liberation to host the exhibit and event expo revival, searching for Trent Alley at Central, two hundred and eighteen people attended the event, countless people came through and looked at the exhibit, that was a really powerful. Kathy Bachen, our STEM labor, and that's a very successful Star Wars themed program that was in May. Were great. Scene Fest was our highest attended um, program and our highest impact score. Our highest impact score for youth was uh, was one of the Star Wars programs, Star Wars STEM Fund. But the highest attendant youth thing was when seventy babies got together and some storytimes. A lot of babies. Yeah, and that's it, you're gonna expect with summer reading starting, uh, especially on the youth side, actually, it's gonna be youth side, there's gonna be probably far more attendance at things next month or two. The impact score is gonna go up. On the inverse, a lot of times the adult stuff goes down a bit during summer, a lot more options, so anticipates that for the next couple of months.
You, you got us staying pretty bad. That, that one's gonna be tough, but thanks, Jason. Hi Paul.
Howdy, sorry I'm late.
That's okay, um, now that you're here, uh, what things do you have from us or from the council?
Yeah, never, uh, why, never a dull moment, have my um, trusty little sidekick here Hazel, just turned, uh, just turned one and having a lot of fun with my uh, city name badge, so one of these days I'll get that back. Um, but yeah, some of the big kind of ticket items that we've been working on, um, yeah. We did just uh, approve ARPA funding, um, so we had our last uh, neighborhood council, uh, town hall, um, we approved about five million dollars, um, in total funding, um, some of this included um, helping transition, uh, some providers, um, for homelessness that, um, are wanting to move downtown. Move out of downtown, um, especially compassion addiction treatment, um, looking at residential uh, lighting, uh, downtown, uh, housing study, as we look to, um, move, convert a lot of, uh, commercial office space, uh, to residential downtown. Um, youth sports and activities, childcare, there was a lot in there, um, and I'm proud to say that there was really good collaboration, and someone's getting something um, across every, uh, district and neighborhood. Um, you know, policy-wise, one area that I've been very focused on um, is uh, ordinance related to uh, firearms and weapons in the city. Um, so this would uh, ban open carry um, at different uh, public facilities, city-owned buildings, and public property included. Um, there were some gaps in code around, uh, the PFD um, stadium, uh, some of our, uh, community centers. Um, it would also make it illegal to discharge a firearm, uh, in the city. Um, gotten really good feedback on this, and uh, also worked on it with, uh, SPD. Um, another kind of big item that we'll be considering on Monday is a resolution, uh, related to, uh, traffic calming called Safe Streets Now. Um, and this would, uh, be around the concept of adaptive designs, so things that we can do for quick fixes uh, in our neighborhoods, related to crosswalks and lighting, um, sidewalk repair and bike lanes. Um, some things that are more, uh, affordable and we can do, uh, quickly. Um, in addition, we're kind of going back and thinking about some of the questions, um, after the public safety levy was pulled, um, what that looks like for a new package, uh, and then next week, on the twenty-seventh, we are gonna have, um, a community forum, public, uh, interfacing interviews for our new, uh, police chief, uh, finalists. So I've been on the search committee, uh, we're getting very close, um, and we have a really good, good list of candidates that I'm excited to get feedback from for the community. Before I hopped on, I did catch a little bit about, uh, Zine Fest, and that was just a tremendous event, it was so cool to see the turnout. Um, a, a, a lot of support, um, just a, a really, really fun, uh, cool event, so, um, major kudos to the library for, for pulling that off. That's what I got.
Well, thank you, looks like you got your hands full, so.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, and uh, just was biking home and got caught in the thunderstorm, so sorry for the delay.
No worries, thank you. Okay, under new business, Samantha.
Hi. Um, so a little bit delayed report on this, we ran our twenty twenty four employee engagement survey from March twenty seventh to April ninth this year, so just wanted to report some of those results, uh, out of a hundred and forty-four staff members, a hundred and twenty completed the survey. And about a hundred and five consistently answered each question, so ten to fifteen people skipped quite a few. Um, but as tradition has been, um, each question consisted of four options, so strongly agree, agree, disagree, and strongly disagree. Um, and we, I just included some highlights for you, so I'll go over a couple of those, um. We did revamp the survey a little bit, so we added about nineteen new questions, and then kept some of the old questions for consistencies and comparison sake. Uh, so I did throw a little wrench in it, um, if you ask some of my colleagues, but, um, I think in the future, these will lead to some, 'cause year over year. Um, a couple of highlights, we had a new best score, which was, I have a close friend at work, so out of all the nine years of the survey results, that was the best score we've ever gotten was this year. Um, also, some of our high scores were around our managers and their commitment to their teams. We received higher scores in the areas of support after an incident, encouragement of learning and interest in development, and providing opportunities for growth, so that was a cool highlight to see the positive feedback on that. Um, a couple areas where we've been consistently strong over the years, um, feeling free to use judgment to serve our customers, and having access to all of the information and materials needed to do ju, the job well, so that included, um, training and, uh, just materials and access. So, um, as far as areas for improvement, as consistent with last year, um, really focused on safety and security. Uh, as you've seen with our efforts towards security guards and, um, the safety of our central branch and our neighborhood branches. Uh, so just really focusing on that based on employee feedback as well. Um, so one of the things that our branches do with the results is each manager will kind of go over the results with their team, they have them broken out by branch as well, and so or by department, like programming facilities, um, and they will go over those results together and kind of create goals throughout the year. Um, one of the main ones that I've been hearing has been how is success measured? So that's something that they'll really be focusing on, what that looks like for their branch and their team. Any questions about the survey?
I had a question about the thirty percent of employees would like to see improvement in communication from library leadership. Is that something that's already in play or is that something new?
I think that's something that we've received continual feedback on. This kind of solidified that for us. And something that we try as an administration down to management to, to work on. I know recently Amanda has done a leadership communication workshop. So we have taken steps to kind of open up those lines of communication.
We have a couple of avenues for communications communicated. One, we have a staff internet. All the posts are made. We have a knowledge base with all the things. Amanda's team sends out weekly email that's themed around either administrative news, programming news, operations. You got another one in there?
As needed.
So the cadence is there. So what we're trying to figure out right now is what do you think we are communicating to you? Which I think is another question. So we're working through that of, you know, how can we get better at that? How can we get more? Is it a timing issue, content issue? And I think it varies.
Is there a goal for percentage of total staff that you all would like to see completing the survey? Just looking at, I mean, twenty four not completing it and then solid percentage of overall staff didn't consistently answer each question. There's, yeah, there in terms of information.
So this was slightly higher than last year. There were about a hundred that completed it and then there were skips within there. So we got about you know, twenty more in that. But I mean, the goal would be everyone. We'd like everyone's feedback.
So I'd just be curious if there's like specific sites potentially where there's employees not responding.
It's some of our employees, they just facilities, they don't live on a computer. You know, so it's, it's, or a page, like it's tougher for us to get that sort of feedback.
Or we have some temp, or some pages that work eight hours a week. They may not have seen it or gotten to it.
Is there a cheer, like Andrew about is to those who are concerned about not getting enough information? You said maybe, you know, maybe it's content related, maybe it's timely. I mean, maybe it's the medium in which they're not, are receiving information. And I'm just curious, is there an open ended question in the survey? Asking people to maybe be able to fill it in or is it?
There is an area for comments at the bottom. What are, what are we doing well? What are we not doing well?
And each question has a comment?
Yes, each question.
So part of the work that we're doing is we're also visiting with asking managers to their various partners. Asking. Some of the feedback we got was, well, the question's also not clear. Or, for example, some folks for the security question, security question were answering on behalf of Central. Really didn't really have security concerns there at their location, but they did because we're a really empathetic bunch. So I think that we also need to do some work on how would we like you to take the survey in the future as well, just so we can get more clarity around what are people thinking when they're taking this? It's an imperfect tool.
As surveys are.
But it gives us a snapshot. Yes, it kind of gives us a snapshot of what should we be paying attention to, right?
Thank you, Samantha. And now we go to Denise and Skylar for the Summer Reading Club.
Little presentation. Are you gonna TikTok? We are so happy to be talking about Summer Reading Club with you. I, my name is Denise Newhere and I'm the Youth Services Manager. I haven't met all of you officially. So it's very nice to be here. And before I get started, I just wanted to thank you for being trustees in this library board and for serving and loving your library. Not the case at all board, so I just appreciate you for caring about the community. Um, so here we go. Alright, so Summer Reading Club, our large goal was to really get those reluctant readers to want to join the Summer Reading Club. We really want them to feel welcome and to find that book that maybe they just haven't discovered yet to make them love reading. So we chose to go with the fifteen day a month model, which is something I took with me from the Community Library Network in North Idaho. And what it is, is you don't have to concentrate on minutes or hours or number of books. You just can relax and have fun and read and set your own goals for each day that you read. So the minimum is to read fifteen days a month or more, and then you get a prize each month for completing that goal. So it's a really great way for reluctant readers to feel accomplished because they could read twenty minutes a day and they have their goal, which is what we want them to do. So also, we, we did decide to have extra incentives this year, but our incentives are ones that encourage reading and also partner with organizations and businesses and really support them in our community. So I'm not against a little bit of bribery, just to get kiddos to read and to discover that they love reading. And so we had a great, a great response when we asked community to give us donations and things. So let's see, I'm gonna have Skylar talk a bit about Beanstack, just thought we'd track her.
Yes, I love talking about summer reading each year because it's such an engaging campaign that we do constantly and annually to really engage our readers in reading and more. You can read in any format. You can read via book, manga, comics, audiobook, ebook. It really opens it up for however you want to read. And the beautiful thing about Beanstack, which is our tracking tool, is that no matter your age, you can sign up for any challenge. There are a lot of challenges in there, but there is one for four different age groups. So we have it set up for ages zero to four, kids grades K through five, teens grades six through twelve, and adults. And as Denise mentioned, we've really opened up the incentives this year and now we have incentives for adults as well, which we will cover later in this presentation. Beanstack is offered to us with support from the friends at the library. We're really thankful for their involvement because this has been an awesome tool. As per date, right now, we have about twenty eight hundred people participating in summer reading. So summer reading started June first and we're still seeing a lot of people signing up. And I think that's because it's just so engaging this year. So the really cool thing about Beanstack is that we have badges, rewards, and a bingo card. And then you can use the app or the desktop version to keep reading and logging your days. So as you can see, it's kind of small, but you can see the calendar right there. It will track your streaks. So you can see if you're on a roll. And yeah, it's, it's great. You will also be able to zoom in on the badge there as well. Immediately upon signing up, you get a badge and it's the welcome to the club badge. So we kind of really, this system really gamifies the experience as well. In addition to reading badges, we also have a few activity badges in there as well for all ages. So some of those badges, which are, I haven't included in this presentation, kind of align with some of the activities in here, which we'll cover later in this presentation as well. So we're really excited to be using Beanstack for this challenge. Okay, we're gonna talk a bit about the prizes. I'm gonna talk about the kiddo prizes and then Skylar will talk about the adult prizes. So in June, after reading fifteen days or more, all ages will receive a book. Stumi in Support Services, she does an amazing job choosing a variety of books that all the kids can choose from and enjoy. So we really appreciate her and we would really like to thank the friends of the library. They are amazing. We love them so much. And they give us very generous grants to pay for all these books for summer. In July, the babies and toddlers get a beach ball with the library's logo. And then the kids get a free scoop from Ben &amp; Jerry's, or they can choose to have a buy one, get one skate rental at the Numerica Skate Ribbon. Teens get a boba tee, which I want to be a teen, from Revival Tea Company, or a buy one, get one skate rental as well. And then in August, babies and toddlers get a choice of a bib or bubbles. And then the kids and teens get a free pass from the Spokane County Fair. So the fair was extremely generous. They gave us fifteen hundred passes this year with ribbons to give to the kids that read and meet their goal for August. They also gave us three really large baskets to raffle off filled with lots of fun prizes, one per month. And then they have a fun program that I'll talk about in a little while as well. Blue Zoo donated one hundred children's passes to us. And we will be raffling those off to the kids that read all three months. So they'll be entered into that raffle to get a free admission to Blue Zoo. For adults, we've really kind of upped the ante this year. There are so many prizes. We went from having virtually no prizes for adults to having a lot. So in June, the prize for reading fifteen days is either a free coffee coupon from Derailleur Coffee in Hilliard in the Sprague Union Building, or a free donut from Rosear supermarkets. In July, our prizes are a free hot yoga class at Beautiful Hot Yoga or a free movie pass to the Garland Theater. And then in August, this is where things get wild. It's our sweepstakes month. So we reached out to a bunch of different businesses and a lot of them had donated one or a few prizes that were incredible, right? So we decided to have a sweepstakes option. So you read fifteen days, you get entered into the sweepstakes of your choice and there are seven to choose from. We have tattoo gift cards from a local tattoo artist. We have improv theater tickets to Blue Door Theater. A group pass to the Spokane Comedy Club with fifty dollars worth of food included. Wild Walls, there are two options. There's a class for two for a vertical ropes course or a day pass with gear included. And then the last one is two concert tickets to the Spokane Symphony Masterworks Series of your choice. So at the end of August, we'll be doing the raffle for that or the sweepstakes for that. We'll choose the winners at the end. And that, because there are varying amounts of prizes for each one. So it's, it's pretty wild.
That's good, Brian.
So we started the summer off by having kickoff parties at all of our branches. And we had a hundred and eighty nine people come, families. They made a reusable book bag and decorated with fabric markers and stencils. They decorated bookmarks. Skylar and staff from the branches organized and put together these awesome bundles of books based on different themes that came with a beach ball and a pencil. So we really wanted to encourage the kiddos to start checking out books and start their reading journey for the reading club. So that was really great. And it was just really wonderful to have conversations with all these families and get them excited about reading this summer. So we have a lot of programs that we have planned. The Youth Services Team has been very busy, working so hard. They care so much. And they started planning back in January for all of the summer programs that you're about to see. And last year they did ninety three programs, not including storytime. And this year they've upped their game to a hundred and twenty programs plus all the storytimes. So we have some special presenters that will be joining us this summer. We have the KPBX Kids Concert with the Canote Brothers this Saturday, actually, at Central. We're also having another concert with two teen bands from the high schools. And we're so excited to have them. The Excuses and Divine will be performing in August. We also have the Mobius Discovery Center. They're bringing their inflatable planetarium to Shadle. And we'll be able to have a hundred and fifty people, twenty five people per half hour to see the stars, see a different show. And then we'll have Space Olympics going on at the same time. So while they're waiting for their turn to go into the planetarium, they can do that. We also have Red Hearn Productions, Andy Ferguson. He is one of my favorite entertainers. He's coming from Oregon. He plays music. He has albums. He also does a lot of cool puppetry. And so he's doing four shows for us this summer. We are having the West Valley Outdoor Learning Center come with the Rockin' Reptiles at all seven of our branches. So they'll be bringing a lot of neat little creatures to maybe touch some of them and not touch some of them, but I'm excited to see those. Science Speaks is an organization of scientists and educators that are really passionate about STEM. So they'll be working with Ms. Kathy to bring STEM programs to our libraries. We also have our favorite Lego experts from the TV show Lego Masters, Eddie and Aziza. They'll be coming to do a Lego building program. And then, as I mentioned before, the fair is bringing Cedar, the Highland Cow, to the Shadle Park. So we get to hang out with Cedar and hear her story because a book was written about her and take pictures with her and do a cow craft. It'll be amazing. So those are some of the people that, organizations that we are partnering with this summer. So we also have some cool family programs coming up. We're doing our touch and truck events. We have two of those scheduled with Mason and Kathy. And then we also have Family Playdate in Paris because the Olympics are in France. Madeline's seventy five, seventy fifth anniversary. She's from France. So Ms. Lauren is very passionate about France. Oh, crafts and games and, you know, Eiffel Tower building challenges and treats and things. So should be really fun. Rebel Lisa is our art specialist and they are amazing at providing different programs for different age groups. So they will be doing some for the older kiddos, so like murals. They'll be doing some journaling and some map making. Also for the littles, so for tiny hands, they're gonna do finger painting. We're gonna get really messy. They're also gonna tricks their entire selves on paper and decorate that and do a Play-Doh kitchen. And we will hope that they do not eat the Play-Doh food. It is just to make. Our science, I forget environment. I probably did, but we'll go to the next one. So, thank you. Our science specialist Kathy is gonna do really cool things. She's gonna be making rovers, do some nebula spin art, space Olympics, and magnifying glass fun. So she has really fun things planned. And then Mason's our environmental specialist and they will be doing Planting Palooza and Nature Detectives. So lots of fun learning about your environment, about the local environment. So it should be a really great time. Our early learning specialist, Ms. Lauren, will be doing, well, all of our staff, they do regular storytimes. But Ms. Lauren decided to take two of our storytimes to Comstock and Hayes Park each week. And it's, we've had such great comments from families that we're doing outdoor storytime this summer. They're going really well. She's also doing fandom storytimes about Bluey, Paw Patrol, Daniel Tiger. So we hope to partner for that one. But those should be really fun as well. No pressure. Alright, and then teens, Gina is doing some really fun escape rooms and nerf battles around our system, doing them in different libraries and as well as Dungeons and Dragons. Gina has started a teen volunteer program this year. So she did orientations and she's training volunteers to help us with Youth Services Program, giving them that opportunity to increase their skills when they want to get an actual job and they could put it on their resume. We are also doing some camps this summer. We have two coding camps, the Lilac City Youth Camp, Music Camp, and Architecture Camp. And then we have some outreach with community events and schools and camps. So Youth Services is super busy, but super excited. It's gonna be a great summer. Yes, so in addition to a lot of events, we have a lot of activities in our award winning summer reading magazines. We did actually win a PR exchange award for these a few years ago. So humble brag, I suppose. So we have the Teen Zine and the Spokane Somersault Kids Magazine. Each one comes with activities and reading recommendations for all ages. They are located at all locations. We have thousands. So if you know any children or teens in the area, we would love to see all of these kits into the hands of those kids. Needless to say, though, we actually worked with twenty eight Spokane Public Schools and a few private schools to get boxes of magazines into the school before the end of the school year. So a lot of kids actually already have these, which is really awesome. Additionally, at the back of the magazine, there is a paper tracker because I know that some families like to track via paper and they can come in and redeem their prizes that way as well. So you can pass these out. There's a ton of stuff in here for kids to enjoy all summer long. We're really excited about it. Just from all of this alone, I would love to report that we've actually seen more engagement this summer than we did for the entire summer last year. So I reported earlier that we had about twenty eight hundred people currently registered. I think we only hit about two thousand last year. So we're already seeing a lot more participation and I think it's from all of the efforts to base the team. We're really excited and we hope you enjoy it as well.
The increase, two thousand to twenty eight hundred, are you seeing that increase in both kids and adults?
Oh, adults, yeah. You know, last year we only had twenty seven adults complete the challenge, probably because there were no incentives. I think the fact that there are incentives this year, we have most of the participation right now coming from adults. So I have eight hundred adults currently registered or more.
So I have eight hundred adults currently registered, um or more, uh I think it's around a thousand now, but there's, yeah, yes. Lots of adult participation this year.
And you'll see a lot more of the marketing for the adult participation this year, Skylar's done a really good job with that. And then also there'll be a feature in the Trending Request Magazine, um with reading recommendations and an app stuff like that.
It it's a lot of promotion, I will also say that uh with school just ending, we probably anticipate more children's participation as well. I know the end of the year is kind of a mad dash to just get done, so I think now we'll be seeing a lot more teen and kid participation as well. And baby and preschool and toddler, you know, all ages. Any other questions?
This is great, yeah, now that I can be a reluctant reader and still at my own age, definitely. With all of the work that you've put in on all of this and all the things that you've managed to accumulate. When this is over, what happens?
I think we'll probably assess the data and see what went well and what can be improved upon. Um I think something that's already going really well is that we've had a lot of community participation, and the fact that a lot of organizations have wanted to donate. To the cause and participate is indicator enough that there's a lot of interest here. So we'll probably expand it even more every year from now on.
Can I ask, so were you trying to get at what happens with the people who participated, how do we keep them in the journey?
I think, yes, so what's really cool about Beanstack is that you can participate all year long, we have challenges that go throughout the year. Um last year, we introduced a winter reading challenge as well, more consistently for all ages, so we'll probably do that again, so. Um we didn't have any adult prizes last year for that, much similar to summer reading programs as well, so we'll probably just continue this as well. In terms of challenges, we'll probably have to see how we can keep getting people throughout the other months as well, summer reading is usually the big push. Um but we would love to see more winter engagement as well.
We're hoping they really love our programs this summer, and then they'll discover them for the first time and then keep coming back. Uh the team's already planned fall, so we're already ready for that, yeah.
The point is to create lifelong learners, just moving forward forever and ever, and um. Yeah, everybody in Spokane reading, that's cool.
Nice, thank you.
I just need to record you saying that.
So I I'm loathe to do this, because once I do, then I'm going to get dirty looks from people, but. I wonder if it would be as a fun exercise for us all to be part of this this summer. And track our own progress or lack thereof.
See who reads the most.
Yeah, this this might be a fun way to just keep us going and keep us engaged.
Are you volunteering?
Well, I'm considering, and but I think it is something that might be kind of fun for for all of us to do and.
Whereas we get access to the incentives.
Oh, yeah.
Of course, duh, so. So, okay, if if you're all on board. Excellent, we'll go ahead and we'll get those who are not here and tell them that they've.
I'm sure that Danny's already signed up for it.
Oh, it is road trip. Okay, thank you all, that was great. Nothing, oh, you know. Uh next regular meeting is July sixteenth at the South Hill Library. Uh do you have need for an executive session today, Sue? Alright, going once, going twice.